I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it is founded, by God, with all his just strength.
I would like to, if we could, just take a short moment of silence in honor of a couple other horrendous incidents that crossed our nation. And hopefully, with the Lord's help, we can see this come to an end and be doing this at every indication of a council meeting. It seems to be rampant, and God bless over these people and their families. So, please give us... Thank you, appreciate. Welcome to our August 6th council meeting. Start with a roll call.
Councillor Wendorf.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
West.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Chalada.
Here.
Dadi.
Here.
Demus.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. And again, just a reminder to use the microphones, everybody. If you're speaking to Mike, you have to be about this close to the mic. Don't go across the room. Come up to the podium. Department heads pull it toward you so we can get the recordings accurate, and those at home can hear as well. With that, councillors, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting of July 16th, 2019, and the special city council meeting minutes of July 10th, 2019, and July 23rd, 2019.
Your Honor.
Councillor Chalada.
To approve those minutes.
We do have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this is going to move us right into the bid openings. We have one bid opening, the golf simulator for the Rock Springs Civic Center. It looks like we might have a possibility of three bidders. Okay, the first bidder being High Definition Golf. Believe they are out of Ontario. We do have a bid bond attached. Total bid from High Definition, $43,009.35. Second bidder, True Golf, out of Centerville, Utah. Bid bond is attached. Total bid, $53,550. $53,550. Oh. There's a discount applied. Total bid, $49,895. $49,895. We think this is the bid. Third bid, Sports Entertainment Specialist. And that's Broomfield, Colorado. There is no bid bond attached to Sports Entertainment. We'll provide these to department for review and rec... Okay, moving on. This is going to move us to the appointment section of our agenda. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of Justin Lemon to serve on the Board of Adjustment's first term.
Counsel, Justin Lemon has stepped up to serve on Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. West. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councillor Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Chalada.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendorf.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, I submit the name of Blake Manus to fill the unexpired term for Lauren Schoenfeld on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Counsel, Blake Manus has stepped up to serve on Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that...
Wendorf. Councillor Wendorf.
I move that Blake Manus appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. West, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councillor West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Chalada. Chalada?
Uh, yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, I submit the name of Brianna Jackman to fill the unexpired term for Gregory Haseman on the Historical Museum Board.
Counsel, Brianna Jackman has stepped up to serve on Rock Springs Historical Museum Board. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. President.
Mr. Tate, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Chalada, roll call, please.
Councillor Savage.
Yes.
Chalada.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is going to bring us to the public's, our presentations and proclamation. Is Mr. Brubaker in the house? He's attending Green River meeting, so he may be delayed. This is going to bring us then to our proclamation. We'll wait for Devin. Proclamation is Muscular Dystrophy Awareness Month. Fill the boot. Where's all those firefighters? Stand up if you recognize them. Please give their money. Seth, would you like to give a speech? Oh, Mr. Forrest, come on up. We'll do the proclamation afterwards, Mike. Tell us what you're all about, and then turn around and give everybody's cash.
Okay. My name's Michael Forrest. I'm here tonight to represent our local 1499 Firefighters Union. More specifically, our involvement to raise money for MDA. This is a longstanding tradition that began in South Boston in 1952, when 20 firefighters ran a door-to-door campaign to assist a desperate father in needs of funds for his child, who was diagnosed with a devastating disease. IFF officially teamed up with MDA in 1954. Since then, the relationship has grown and grown, and the results have been, the results we have achieved together have been outstanding. Last year alone, 100,000 firefighters, that's 1,500 locals, raised $20 million. I have personally been able to volunteer my time and be involved in this process since I became a firefighter in March of 2000. It wasn't until five years ago that I really began to understand where this money goes and what it's used for. Through attending the boot camp convention for the last five years, I've been able to meet the children and families that these diseases affect. It has changed, it has sparked my passion to do as much as I can and as much as we can as a community to help provide funding for research, assist families, and get these children to summer camp for what all of them say is the best weekend of their year. Although our goal this year is to raise more money than last, that's only part of our overall goal. As a union, we'd really like to educate our community this year as to how this money helps those in need. We will be collecting at Walmart, as usual, August 30th, 31st, and September 1st and 2nd. So, thank you to our local Walmart for that. In addition, we have reached out to Mike and Larry at Square State Brewing to do a first annual kickoff for Fill the Boot on August 15th. Although we are still working out details, they were very excited to help us out. This will give the public a non-formal, laid-back environment to talk to our local members and hopefully learn a little bit about what their donation actually does for so many children once it actually hits the bottom of that boot. We are super excited for this first-time event, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. That's great. And with that, I'm going to present a proclamation, whereas muscular dystrophy is not a single disease or disorder that, is not a single disease or disorder that affects everyone the same way, rather, it's an umbrella term that covers a plethora of neuromuscular diseases ranging in severity. And more than 1 million individuals in the United States are affected by one of the different types of muscular dystrophy. And the Muscular Dystrophy Association, the MDA, is leading the fight to free individuals and the families who love them from the harm of muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related muscle debilitating diseases that take away physical strength, independence, and life. And for more than 60 years, the International Association of Firefighters have stood on the front lines for MDA. And the IAFF is the largest national sponsor of the Muscular Dystrophy Association, where there are more than 280,000 members pledged to saving lives, both as firefighters and as the strongest campaigners for MDA. And the Rock Springs Fire Department is having their annual Fill the Boot event from August 30th through September 2nd, 2019, at the Walmart parking lot, which is an honored tradition where thousands of dedicated firefighters in the nation ask the community in which they live to make a donation to MDA. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, do hereby declare September 2019 to be Muscular Dystrophy Awareness Month, and urge all of our citizens of Rock Springs to participate by helping our Rock Springs Fire Department Fill the Boot from August 30th through September 2nd, 2019, at our local Walmart. Let's get out and help these guys. Appreciate that. Okay, still no Devin. We can come back to Devin. And let's just go into our public hearing section of our agenda. We have a public hearing on an application for major changes to the final development plan for the Sweetwater Station Phase II planned unit development submitted by JFC Engineers and Servicers on behalf of Sweetwater Station LLC, of which we will take action under Resolution 2019-119. With that, just a few comments. As we enter into the public hearing for the final development plan for Sweetwater Station II, I'd like to say we all live in the same community. It's still a small community. We all conduct our business and live our lives here together. There are times when sensitive issues and other developments come before the city council and the P&amp;Z. In my opinion, this shows signs of progression and positive signs of growth. No party should be blamed for bringing these projects and/or concerns forward. It's part of the process. And it's our job to allow the discussion to occur, learn from it, and base our decisions on findings of fact and not emotions. Every landowner has a right to develop their land within the rules and regulations set forth by the governing body, and every citizen has a right to voice their concerns as it relates to their business, their property, and their well-being. It's the role of the elected officials to listen to all sides, be informed of the rules and regulations, and to make decisions that are in the best interest of our citizens and the community as a whole. We've received numerous emails, letters, and calls, all of which are part of the recorded minutes of the previous planning and zoning meetings, and included in the city council meeting packet for your review and consideration. Staff has also provided responses and recommendations as well. The council will take action on the proposed Resolution 2019-119 later in the agenda when it comes up. That being said, as we move forward, be respectful of one another, understand each other's roles and duties, and let's conduct ourselves in a professional manner without threats or accusations. We, as a city council, will listen to each petitioner and eventually, and individually, decide what each feels is the best path forward and in the best interest of Rock Springs. I'll now open it up for anyone wishing to speak against the proposed development. You'll be given five minutes to present your reasons and comments, and Council President Savage will keep the time. Then I'll open it up for anybody wishing to speak in support of the proposed development. You'll also be given five minutes to present your reasons and comments within five minutes, and there'll be no rebuttal. I'll now ask for anyone speaking in opposition, please come up to the podium and...
Your Honor.
Oh, Councillor West.
Before we get started here, I just want to offer kind of my stance on this. I've researched this issue, of course, for quite a few months now by attending both planning and zoning meetings, and obviously more so in particular over the last few weeks once it was turned over to be voted upon by the council. I've been conflicted about this issue since its inception, as I am passionate about holding this office and reluctant to shy away from a difficult vote, as I feel that is what we are all here elected to do. That being said, I believe I unfortunately have a clear conflict with this matter. My brother owns a lot in Phase One. My cousin, who is also a business partner of mine, owns a home. Both individuals and their families are paying members to the subdivision's HOA. A wise man once told me that perception can be perceived as reality. Ethically, I feel as though I owe it to my constituents and to the people of this city, regardless of what ward this lies within, to be fair and honest. With that, I am announcing that I will not be participating in the discussion regarding this public hearing, and I will be abstaining from the vote on Resolution 2019-119. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor West. Let the record show, with that, the microphone is open.
Good evening, council and Mayor Como.
Jay, just for, I'm sorry, we didn't start your time yet.
Okay.
But if you get up to the mic, would you please just state your name for Chris, so she can get the further reference?
I'm Jay Schneider's, and I live in Sweetwater Station, Phase One, Lot 19, which is adjacent to the proposed, or Phase Two. And I have some handouts for the council. Uh, sure.
Let's let Jay talk while they're handing out. Jay, if that's okay?
Sure.
Your time has passed.
Sure. And I think we have, we only have a few speakers. We're anticipating only a few speakers. And so, a number of the speakers have volunteered their time to those that do plan to speak. So, there's obviously been a lot of back and forth on this issue. Lot of maybe aggressive defense of the issue, as well as aggressive acts in terms of trying to stop this proposal. So, what I plan to do tonight is talk about concerns we have about the process, concerns that we have about the legality of the action, and what I'd like to start with is a proposed solution. And we're passing that out as we speak. So, on page, these are labeled in kind of bold, black numbering, just so I can reference them easy. But I first heard about this proposal, it's on page one. Rob DiBernardi called me in March to talk about the proposal and what they plan to submit, planning and zoning, and that was a change in zoning from RE to R1. And at that point, I mean, I tried to return Rob's call, but was unable to. So, what I did instead is just send him a text, and we're moving along in the process at that point. I was definitely opposed to the rezoning. My position is, you know, I'd like to see it stay, it needs to stay RE. RE is 80 acres. The second phase is, the second half, 40 acres. So, I told Rob that, you know, don't need to engage in a long conversation. Rob texted back, "Gotcha." And the part that's underlined is the interesting part. So, his point was if it doesn't pass R1, which at the planning and zoning meeting, it wasn't even, there was a motion, the motion wasn't second, and of course, if a motion doesn't get seconded, it just dies. So, Rob made the point that if it doesn't pass, we'll probably just build Phase Two as RE, rather than R1, and we'll just, you know, go along with the community and city council, and everything's good. So, the handout that just got passed out to the group is a solution. The owners in Phase One are very pro-development of Phase Two. The problem that we have with what we've seen so far is that these proposals are far too high in density. I mean, to go from 28 lots, as the original vision contained, up to 73 lots is way beyond what any of us had expected. So, in today's possible solution that we're presenting, there are actually eight wins in it. All lots conformed RE, which is important, no one has to violate. 28 lots are increased to 37 lots. So, that's a 32% increase, yet they all conformed to RE. Not much in that proposal for the Phase One homeowners to argue about. It's, you know, fits within the PUD, which is all designated RE, and, you know, we're fine with that. Part of the PUD process is, you can make minor adjustments to it, you know, based on, you know, various rationale, and that's what this does. The Spicer heirs get to sell their property, meets Tom Spicer's original vision and the vision he sold to the homeowners. He gets to keep his promise, basically, to the owners in Phase One, which I think that's important to him. Rob DiBernardi gets to build lots and infrastructure. Mike Hayden, the other, and the other builders get to build homes. Mike built my home, did a great job. In fact, Rob DiBernardi came over and looked at my home, because he was contemplating building and using Mike as a builder. Realtors get to sell new homes. City council can approve a plan with everyone's support. They don't have to test their boundaries of their discretionary authority, which we think is a real legal problem. And, you know, another important item is this provides time for the city, developers, and other interested parties to figure out how to unlock more land for development. So, that's a major issue in this town. You know, we'll hear from the builders that there just isn't land to develop. I mean, Mike Hayden, good friend, wants to build homes, but there aren't any lots. So, this would provide a bridge to unlocking more lots within Rock Springs, and it does it in a way that meets everyone's... Is my time up?
Okay, you're gonna have to wrap it up, Jay.
Can other people cede their time?
Can I cede the time?
Can they yield their time to me?
Oh, I, how many, let's just see, how many?
Yeah.
Raise your hand, who's gonna, who's gonna, who wants to speak in, in opposition?
I'll yield my time.
Yeah, we're trying to keep this tight.
Got it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
You've ceded time. Five minutes.
Okay. In terms of process violation, we couldn't disagree more, disagree more with the city attorney's legal opinion concerning the ambiguity of 13-906-D-2. And that's a really important point. We believe that the requirements of Section 13906-D-3, as labeled, shall apply. And what that means, if you follow that procedure and the way the, you know, the appropriate correction is within the ordinance, city council has the right to, you know, they have this hearing, which we're doing now, but part of the process is... hearing, which we're doing now, but part of the process is, we can submit a petition, and if 20% of the adjacent lot owners protest, then it drives the vote threshold to 75%. And we firmly believe in that correction. As such, I have an updated petition that was signed, the last signature was about 10 minutes ago.
And I'll submit that for the record.
So we have achieved the 20% requirement. The city attorney went back and forth on this issue. At first, he said it was simple majority. After I had a discussion with him, Fred Von Erns had a discussion with him, and he saw the mistake, and he agreed that, and notified the mayor of the 75% threshold. My understanding is he notified the mayor. The next day, I received a voicemail, with a pretty bizarre voicemail, retracting that piece and going back to the simple majority. So he was going, he kind of saw the change in how the outline should read, and then went back, and what that does is go back to the simple majority vote. So we, long and short of it, we think there's real issues, and we think that the public protest piece applies, and the 20% homeowners protesting increases the vote threshold to In terms of the legality of the action, we firmly believe that the city council does not have the authority to rezone without following the provisions of the rezoning ordinance. So this proposal is, in essence, granting 65 variances to non-conforming lots. It's essentially rezoning from RE to R1 by de facto, and we just don't think that's gonna hold. So we don't think this group has the authority, and that has been, other cases have shown that that doesn't hold up. Section 13903, it's page 16 and 17 in the Bold, and that, these pages have not really been reviewed, I don't think we've focused that much on them. But that contains the procedures for granting variances. The proposed amendment really does not meet any of the criteria, yet you're being asked to approve 65 lots for variances. So variances, I've underlined some of the, kind of what I thought were the important points. Variances are potentially granted if the owner's deprived of reasonable use of the land, and variances are usually, you know, specific to an individual lot. They're not, they don't, they're not specific to 65 out of 73 lots, or 89% of an area, in a blanket form. The plans shall contain sufficient information for the board to make a proper decision on the matter. Their request shall state the exceptional conditions and the peculiar and practical difficulties claimed as a basis for the variance. If I read the application, I don't see anything, and I haven't heard of anything that addresses that point, which is required in the ordinance. So in this plan, they have not addressed any of those items. There are no exceptional conditions, there's nothing peculiar, there's no practical difficulties, just they want to increase the density. Another point is, variances will not merely serve as a convenience to the applicant, but is necessary to alleviate demonstrable hardship and difficulty. So that's a requirement. Again, these 65 blanket variances just don't meet any of the criteria, and it's because this situation is not appropriate for a variance. A major amendment granting 65 variances, rezoning from RE to R1, effectively, doesn't work. You have to follow the rezoning ordinance. So final thoughts, it should be very clear to all, the processes have been significantly violated, specifically the public protest provision of 13906, which raises the vote threshold to 75%. And I'm not even sure what the current thinking is in the room, if it's simple majority, or if it's 75%, or what everyone individually thinks, but it's pretty clear when you read that, how the outline should be corrected. Should be very clear that this proposal is an attempt to rezone without rezoning, using variances to 65 or 89% of the lots, which do not conform to rural estates. Yet the proposal is saying that we're maintaining rural estates. So two more, two more points.
Okay, Jay, I'm sorry, let someone else yield their five minutes.
We have a whole bunch that we'll yield time. Should be very clear that the provisions of 13903, the procedure for variances to the ordinance, has not been complied with. There hasn't been anything that's addressed the zoning variance, or granting a variance, nothing. Should be very clear that this body does not have the authority to effectively rezone Phase One to R1 and vote to approve would constitute a gross violation of your discretionary authority. You can't, you don't have that discretion. The standard used by the Wyoming Supreme Court is discretion of authority. Lastly, it should be very clear that the residents of Phase One welcome the development of Phase Two as a true rural estate neighborhood, and the RE proposal presented shows a very reasonable solution. And I'm sure there are other variations, but that's, that's one that works. And so hopefully, we can arrive at something that really works. Thank you.
Hey Jay, just one question.
Sure.
And I've sat through a ten Z meeting, read through the minutes, read through every letter, and the majority of the letters state the opposition because of the diminished view of White Mountain and increased noise, increased traffic, but everybody is aware that if any development goes there, you're gonna have diminished view.
Absolutely, and that's, I think, a lesser point than these legal issues and process issues.
What this leads me to believe is there's, there's, everybody says they like, they want development, they're not opposed to it, but since to the south, you have red, you have a BLM, east of the south.
Right.
Then you have this to the west, eventually, somebody's gonna develop.
Yeah, and again, we welcome that. I chose my lot knowing that Phase Two was definitely a possibility, and, or a probability. The difference is, going for, is the density, going from 28 homes, you know, to potentially 37 homes, that's fine. None of us have any problem with that kind of development, and what was really envisioned by the Spicer family, Tom Spicer leaving, leading the charge, but to go from that to this proposal is, is way, way out there. To go from 28 to 73, granting 65 variances, I mean, with no rationale for any of the variances, other than we want to increase density. And I don't think anyone can argue that it's not a de facto rezoning. It is clearly going from RE to R1.
Okay. Jay, I appreciate your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, may I, before I'm on the clock, may I, my name is Fred Von Erns, 2931 Arabian Circle, Rock Springs. Before I'm on the clock, may I also answer that question?
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you very much. When you look at our neighborhood, there's, there's no home that you can look at in that neighborhood where you can't see sightlines to White Mountain and open spaces, so the three-quarter acre lots, or the one acre lots, the one that's almost two acres, we understand that, we absolutely signed up for it. And to be honest with you, you mentioned the BLM land next to mine. When I talked to my realtor at the time, I said, "Sure, it'll never be built on it." We laughed, and I said, "I've been there before, I've lived in cities before, and I can imagine that could be anything in the future, I signed up for that. And if that happens..." I jokingly said, "I tried to buy the lot before somebody builds on it," but I understand that could happen. So we know what we're getting into, but also, to finish the answer, if you look at these sightlines, that grade goes up over 20 feet towards that mountain. The building, according to the CCRs today, is, can be as much as 28 feet. That's what you're gonna have behind you in high density, and anybody goes in that neighborhood, if you look to our east, you'll see higher density housing, and you can't see through those homes. That's the difference. So that would be my answer, and I respectfully thank you for allowing me to do that.
Thanks, Fred.
First of all, city council members, I really thank each of you for your time and service to the community, and your time here tonight, and the preparation work you did, because I know each of you had done quite a bit of work, and we really appreciate that. Sweetwater Station is the only rural estate zone land in the city, and the sole reason why I and several other residents have moved there. In fact, one of my employees, who's trying to make a decision, he's got two homes here in Rock Springs, he's trying to make a decision where he buys his final lot, and he's waiting on this verdict, to be quite honest with you, where he moves to. Open spaces, low density, also facilitates low traffic, safe for our children, our grandchildren, to ride their bikes and play, safe to walk to schools. Many of us would have moved, myself included, to the county if Sweetwater Station was not available. I looked at several lots there, I wanted the space. I've lived in cities before, and I would like to rather live in an open area. I have looked at many other communities, Gillette, what I would call a sister city in terms of the type of industrial jobs, they have three, what they call rural residence communities, one acre lots. They seem to be doing quite fine, based on what I've been able to do research on. Rollins has one rural, they call it rural 40,000 acre, and that seems to be growing and doing quite nicely. We're not the only one that has rural estates. It took vision to create rural estates. Dr. Spicer, I thank you for doing it, the community loves it, and everybody that's come to my house, even looked at my backyard, loves our house and the community. The, Mayor Como, you were a very big part of creating that, and I thank you for having the vision to do that. It took 80 acres to create, to create RE. Phase One is approximately 40 acres. That leaves 40 of the 80 acres still to be developed, as Jay pointed out. Currently, all the lots have been sold, one is up for resale. Each homeowner was very much aware of Phase Two, and we've covered that, the PUD, the HOA, and the CCRs, which creates a lot of complications for Phase One, believe me, especially when we look at what was proposed. Now, what we just came forward with, if it's in RE, not a problem. Dr. Spicer managed each lot. I was living in Philadelphia at the time, I came out here, I met with him, I showed him the designs, he approved them, and I thank you. When we went to build a second building, Suzie's Studio, we went, we had the same meeting, and we reviewed to make sure that we sat, he handheld to make sure that the aesthetics and the design of that community met what he was trying to create, what the mayor was trying to create. Every one of us went through that same process, am I right? So you can imagine how shocked we were when we see the type of proposals that were gonna radically change Phase Two, after really meticulously making sure that we followed the rules of the design and the plans and the vision for Phase One. First 144 versus 28, then 73, I've already talked about that. Jay pointed out, we asked, and we were asked very openly by the Planning Commission, several questions, what would work? Nothing else was brought forward till the 73, again, way outside of RE. We have offered up a solution, would be more than happy, and at that Planning Commission, we would be more than happy to sit and talk about this. Our HOA is only two years old now, we're just starting our third year, July, we're very open about this with the RE covenants. During the Planning Commission meetings, home builders spoke. Jay's house was built by Mike Hayden, I think he's one of the best home builders in the county, okay? He sold 30%, he built 30% of the houses in Sweetwater Station. He spoke to the fact that we cannot sell lots that big, we cannot build homes that big. Eight homes is a lot of homes, Mike, and they're beautiful. I'm the biggest exporter of any product out of the state of Wyoming. I wish I had 30% market share of the global market. Mike does. The city has approximately 200, oh, by the way, one lot went for sale, one home went for sale last year, the city has somewhere around 250 lots, 260 lots, I think, on the market right now, 100 homes, thank you. 180 days, roughly, average sales. The piece of property in the area that nobody wants homes, sold in less than 30 days. The homes sold in less than 30 days. People want to live out there. In my case, my ranch home, my ranch-style home is just over 2,100 square feet with a finished basement. These are not mega mansions, these are people that want open spaces. We are proud of our neighborhood and the mix of young professionals. One of my mechanics lives in our neighborhood, a mechanic for Tata lives in our neighborhood, Rock Springs business owners live in our neighborhood, retail, banking, energy, plumbing, HVAC, doctors, dentists, as well as large business managers. We're very proud of that. All of which are directly and indirectly dependent on Rock Springs' growth, and we are committed to supporting you in that. I, for one, have hired over 280 people, employees, over the last three years. I'm on pace for 120 this year, as the baby boomers retire. I have a lot of influence on where people want to move and how they want to move, and I can tell you, Mike will tell you, anybody will tell you, I ride the brand of Rock Springs. I have, since I've moved here, I respect it, and I respect what this city's done. We just honored the fire department today in muscular dystrophy. This city supported my wife with Alzheimer's this year. I mean, it's a wonderful place to live. The city's current master plan adopted in '23 was developed after Sweetwater Station was created, and identified over 2,000 acres of land that was developed, and over 2,000 acres of land that was vacant and developable.
Just wrap it up, your time did last.
I'm also gonna, I have others, we're only gonna have three speakers, so, thank you. Rick, is that okay?
Okay.
The only rural estate, slow-density lots available in Rock Springs, three-quarters acre and longer, or bigger, 26 homeowners, property values, CCRs, quality of life, builders, realtors, bankers, and our community that rely on steady stream of long-term growth. What I'm really pointing out is, we don't have a problem with Phase Two. The city doesn't have a problem with Phase Two, the city has a problem with long-term planning and making homes available. When our homes were being developed, my builder couldn't build enough homes, they were going so fast, I asked him to build my studio, he didn't have time. Then all of a sudden, it comes to a stop. We need, and I'll be glad to support that, we need to be working on following that master plan and making lot after lot, community after community, available within Rock Springs. That's how I run my business. The HOA has been created and just starting its third year, as I said before, the covenants were set up by the original landowner and developer, RE 80 acres were required, 54 lots total. The proposed changes will radically impact the HOA, and we're very, very concerned about that, and the CCRs. I'll shorten that up just for now, and the planning and zoning, you can read those minutes, Robert's Rules of Order were not followed the second time, and there was some people in the audience that spoke up and told them that they knew how to vote, and we just trained them, and every lawyer we've talked to said, "That's not right." If you're truly committed to growth in Rock Springs, jobs associated with construction in our city, I respectfully ask for your vote, "No" on this matter. To focus our attention on the larger issue of why we are not developing the abundant available land in our master plan. I believe the proposed changes to Sweetwater Station are clear overreach by the developer and the city, resulting in significant harm to the landowners in Phase One, and are inconsistent with the city's master plan governance, and will limit the city's ability to attract buyers who want larger lot sizes. Overall impacting property values, HOA governance, utilities, services, traffic, schools, loss to buyers, property, quality of life, not addressing the long-term building of lots for our community and our local builders, and most important, the trust, the ethical concerns on how this process has been driven for our citizens of the community and Rock Springs, who are avid supporters of the community they live in. Springs who are avid supporters of the community they live in and they're drivers of growth of this community. We ride for the brand, we don't want to feel like we're branded. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Questions, council? Thanks Fred.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council. My name is Daniel Pedri. I live at 3001 Mustang Drive, lot number two, with my wife Rory and three kids. First and foremost, I would like to thank Dr. Tom Spicer for devoting the last seventeen years of his time to making Sweetwater Station, phase number one, an amazing neighborhood to live in, to raise our kids and, most important, cherish many memories together as my family grows older. My wife and I decided to make the Sweetwater Station subdivision our home in two thousand and twelve because of the promise that Dr. Spicer outlined in his vision for both phase one and phase two of the development. My father, my mother, my sister, and many of my friends who are here tonight share the same sentiment. And Tom, once again, I thank you for not straying from this commitment to make this one of the best neighborhoods in Rock Springs. And I know it hasn't been easy, but that's what separates us, Wyoming nights, from the rest. If you look around this room tonight, you'll see what makes this community so special. What cherish? We cherish what is valuable and not just financially speaking. But do you know really what makes people in this community stand apart from the rest of the world? We honor the good word of each other and I strongly believe that for phase two of the subdivision to move forward, we must honor and preserve Dr. Spicer's original vision. That same vision has created wonderful homes for all of the families within the sold-out subdivision. Sold out. Subdivision was sold out under the agreement that phase two would be carried out in accordance with the vision of phase one. I know the time is limited, so I'm just going to leave you with a few thoughts of why the rezoning shouldn't be carried out. First, my family chose to live in Sweetwater Station subdivision for a simple reason, large lots within the city limit of the town that I'm proud to call my home. We're lifelong residents of Rock Springs and this town will always be our home. The contractors and developers stand to make a profit while the citizens who will impact the most to lose what they cherish the most, our community. It's not about the size of the home that's being portrayed by our opposition, but it is about the size of the lot. The freedom of our space we have, living in the furthest northwest corner of city limits, compensates a little bit for the undesirable weather and the wind is unbelievable out there. The lack of water pressure, the snow is very difficult during the winter months and any other convenient amenities that the city can offer living closer to town. But, you know, we clearly understood all of those variables when we built our home, but we also clearly understood the guarantee of the signed documents. We knew that we had the ability to have two horses on our property, which I'm not necessarily sure has been resolved yet. We knew that we had the city governing to control what was being developed around us. We had a planned PUD to protect our investments in a very reputable family who gave their word that there'd be no options to phase two besides what was initially agreed upon. And in fact, the original plan was agreed and approved by the city of Rock Springs during our current mayor's previous term. So finally, I'd like to bring attention to Rock Springs' current economic state. I understand that we have a physical inventory shortage of lots to build on, but we also have a shortage of new home buyers. Like Fred mentioned, as of today, there are over two hundred homes listed on the market with the average listing being over there for a hundred and eighty days. And without going into the current volatility of our extractive industries, because I'm personally worried about my job just as much as the next guy right now, but I would like to point out, and unfortunately, we're not in a boom. And as you know, this creates a lot of volatility to any development. To say now is the best time to rezone and develop this land is simply just not true. We would be surrendering our only large city lots with acreage for a short-term gain of a few people. And to those of you voting tonight, I want you to take a look around this room and see the people in this proposal will impact the most. There's twenty-six families sitting in here that will negatively impact and they have all opposed rezoning by signing the petition. And last, Tom, you gave us your word, which we respected and trusted so much that we chose your development as the place that we made our home. And council, Mayor Como, I hope sharing these thoughts tonight, you will also respect Tom's word and vote down this proposal to uphold the promise that was made to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Daniel. Questions?
I have a question.
Councilman Schlatter?
Were you ever offered the opportunity to purchase phase two?
No.
Owners?
Well, Bob Spicer and I, we talked about it in passing, he is a member of our family and asking me to buy it would be asking me to, you know, do something that is far beyond my control or ability to do so. And so, you know, it wasn't a valid offer and it was never presented to the homeowners association. So if that is the stance that is being taken, yes, I was offered to buy, but I'm a long ways away from a million dollars. Ozzy can vouch for that.
So this was never relayed to the other properties, HOA? That this was an opportunity, that phase to buy out these two and develop, the way they seem the best way to secure your neighborhood?
The conversation that I relayed on was that there was a potential for development and not, I didn't know a price, I didn't know, you know, the terms or anything like that. So basically, what I told the other members of the community was in passing, not a formal meeting, nothing documented, but hey, Spicer's gonna sell that land, what do you guys think? And not the delivery of me coming to say, he approached me. But there is another comment that should be made. After the P and Z meeting, it's a small town, as you mentioned, and my name was brought up at conversation in a dinner that I was very aggressive towards Spicer's and, you know, I was saying things that were hurtful, which I feel were a combination of words that were made that night and everything that I said to them is what I've said in those meetings. But regardless of that, I called Tom Spicer and left word on his voicemail personally apologizing, apologizing. And Bob and I had spoke and, you know, I asked if we could have a closed-door meeting. Is there any way that we could resolve this together before tying up a lot of money in legal, which I don't have a whole lot of money to spare either? And that's gonna be a strain on my family, but what's right is right and this doesn't feel right. And so anyhow, in that conversation, you know, I said, what is the possibility of the HOA buying it? He said, I'll call Tom. He spoke with Tom and Bob's response was, is that you speaking or the HOA speaking? And I said, I cannot speak on the behalf of the HOA, which I cannot.
Appreciate your honesty.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Counselors, any other questions? Are there any others wishing to speak in opposition to this development? Okay, I'm gonna move, Devin, I'm sorry, you, I'm going to move to allow those individuals who are in support of this development to please come up, state your name and give
I'm Daniel Kennedy, I'm representing JFC, I'm representing 4D Development and Sweetwater Station LLC for the amendment to the final PUD for Sweetwater Station Phase Two. A few initial things, the initial plan is not always the best plan. Just consider sewer treatment plant. Although it works, there are issues with it. For the city to sit back and not modify a plan at the expense of everybody else is not being dynamic to meet the needs of the community. When you look at PUDs, history shows that they are modified. North Park's been modified multiple times when it was being developed. That's a PUD. Another PUD just down the road from North Park, you got Morningside. Phase one got built, that was a seven-phase PUD. Phase one was built, the rest of it hasn't and now Foothills Crossing is in the place of a portion of that, that initial PUD. So that PUD obviously will never come to fruition. So with that, PUDs need to be changed for them to continue to conform, to be, to meet the needs of the community. This, the design of the, the initial design of this PUD was a hundred percent uncompliant with RE. At the time, the initial PUD was approved, the minimum lot size was two acres. There isn't a single two-acre lot in phase one or the planned phase two. So you look at that change, variation in lot size, the smallest lot is very similar in this amendment to that ratio of reduction in lot size. The, to, there were several, there was several iterations of this plan. Initially, we presented a plan at the original zone change. The main comment was, yeah, that's the plan you're showing now. Soon as you get this approved, seven thousand square foot lots are going in. Well, we met with the city to outline the process to develop this land. By going with the PUD, what you see is approved. If it gets approved, there aren't changes to it. We can't go with smaller lots. That's a, that gets approved, to change it, we have to go through the same process and it comes before you again through P and Z, through city council to make those changes. So with that, we can't drop to seven thousand square foot lots, just as the initial PUD was presented with smaller lots. This is being presented with smaller lots, with the exception that this is not one hundred percent out of compliance. We provided three-quarter plus acre lots along the boundary of the existing phase one, transitioning into approximately twenty thousand square foot lots, transitioning into the, these smaller, so to speak, lots, which in most every subdivision in Rock Springs would be considered one of the largest lots in the subdivision. These lot subdivisions such as Sweetwater Downs, Whispering Pines, Prairie Edition, Oregon Trails, I look at these as some of the nicer neighborhoods in this town to state that they're not quality and that there are concerns. But when you also have home builders coming and saying they have no lots, that's a concern as well. The people I represent have been long supporters of the city of Rock Springs, have been here for a lot longer than I have and they, they support the community. And when community comes and says, we need help or our businesses will be affected, they're stepping up to the plate and saying, what can we do? When you look across the city of Rock Springs at undeveloped property, you look, it's either not available, not financially available to develop, or there's issues with undermining. So they, there is the biggest issue with the RE. My client would happily develop three-quarter acre lots. The issue is, there is no demand. There is a small demand. The plat for phase one was recorded in two thousand and four. So lots in this subdivision have been available for development, for sale, to be developed since two thousand and four. They've had fifteen years to build this subdivision of twenty, twenty-six lots. I talked to a realtor today that's got one of the lots listed that is still a vacant lot listed for sale.
Mr. Kennedy, if you would.
All right.
Time is up. I'll go ahead and make some remarks.
So.
Five minutes.
So what you've got is a demand of less than two acres per year of a three-quarter plus acre lot. With this plan of thirty-seven lots, you're looking at twenty-two years for those lots to sell. Twenty-two years for an investment of roughly three million dollars, three and a half million dollars to not see return when you're selling lots for a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty thousand at less than two acre, two lots per year. Obviously, that's a tough pill to swallow. My client's more than willing to support the community. The demand for lots of a smaller size is there. And that was the purpose of putting the three-quarter acre lots next to this subdivision and transitioning to smaller, high-demand lots. That way, they could sell it, cover the costs of the subdivision and still have larger lots available that would last, from what they show, you're looking at four years, four plus years of three-quarter acre plus lots. And then you, you say the twenty thousand square foot lots, they're similar in size, they are smaller, but you question, what is the demand for those? Would that detract from the three-quarter acre lot? Would that pull some from the smaller? Possibly. As far as I know, there's, there's no past information on what the demand for a half-acre lot in Rock Springs is. We do know these lots of eleven thousand to thirteen thousand, they will sell in a reasonable timeframe to make this development feasible to support the community's needs. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counselors?
Councilman Zotti? I do have one question. I think Dan, you'd sent me an email yesterday with three diagrams.
Yep.
And there's one here that, final one, we're looking and considering is seventy-two lots. There's another one for sixty-nine lot, if I counted correctly.
Those, those three, three. After the initial, after the initial zone change meeting, there was a meeting set up to meet with the homeowners that was at Vaughn Aaron's residence. We went out there and met with them and got concerns, took their concerns, addressed some of them, what we could. There were mixed fillings across the board, whether it be no development, we're fine with development, if it's the exact development that's shown in the initial PUD, some that said three-quarter acre lots, some that said, make it, make it what you can, but we want larger lots, whatever, whatever makes it financially feasible to do it, we're okay with that, just do what you can and that's what we'd like to see. So that's where we tried to appease what we could and still make it financially feasible. And some of those were changed through, those, those three, the city had never seen those when that took place, that was, other than the zoning, the initial one, that was brought up in the first zoning meeting.
Yeah, that was the first.
Which, that first one never went through utility, that never went through utility review, so that was some of the comments, some of the concessions that were made. Some of the concessions that were made were the lot, lot sizes, the connection of Mustang coming through. Initially, we did not want that. That was directed by the city that they wanted the utilities, the water and sewer, to run through the city street for maintenance purposes. So we maintained the connection of Mustang. After P and Z, as was, was approved, we went back and discussed it with Paul Cowcage and we were able to remove that connection with maintaining a utility right away through there.
And I think the only opposition at that point was the fire department, some comments about.
The, the naming.
But I believe Preston Cross, he had a legitimate concern about people may cut through as a shortcut to North Park. So that seemed to make sense.
Yeah, that, that was addressing the traffic, increase in traffic was to remove that.
Okay, any other questions? Um, you are going to have, first off, get to a mic, are you asking? This isn't gonna go back and forth, we've been.
No, no.
Okay, one question, but you're gonna have to find a mic because everybody is at home watching this and you're gonna be a huge silent area in their TV and I'm gonna have seniors calling me and ripping me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Fred Vaughn Aaron. So, just one question. Everybody was at that home, I wasn't there that night, but can you tell us who was the one that said whatever is affordable? Because nobody seems to remember that.
Mr. Kennedy?
It was a, a lady, I'm not sure, I,
The Realtor?
I don't know any of you by name, so I'm not sure who it was, but it was.
Well, it would be in the minutes.
This was in a private.
This was in the HOA meeting.
Okay, um, with that, are there any others in support, wishing to speak in support?
Mike Hayden with Hayden Construction. I believe the developers of this Phase two have listened to the people of Phase one and tried to work with them. The original planning and zoning, they did ask for an R1 change. They, they, they did not ask for that, the second planning and zoning meeting. Uh, one of the big things they've done is to shut down Mustang because the, the main complaint, I think, in planning and zoning was the through-traffic from Phase one to Phase two. So they have worked with them there. And they have tried to buffer behind Phase one with the three-quarter acre lots. Um, so, um, and they're very well-respected, um, people in this community. They're not, they're not out-of-state people trying to come here. They understand what we need here in Rock Springs. Um, as has been established, there are very few lots for the small builders in this community. And there has been very few lots for a long time. I receive many, many calls every year because I, I've been in business over 30 years and people know me and they call me and wanna build a home. And I don't have any lots available. So, it's, it's impossible for me to help them. And there's just not that many desirable locations to do a subdivision. This, this one is, that has infrastructure and makes it somewhat affordable to develop lots. Um, the Phase one took approximately 13 to 15 years to sell out those lots. That, that is a long time. And, and it's mainly because people couldn't afford the bigger lots. That was the main reason. Because if I had to guess, gun site is around three years old. If I had to guess, there's probably been at least 50 homes built there. So, that's why Phase one took so long to sell, was because of the size. So, this next phase has kinda compromised that, this. It's, there's still big lots that you can build almost any size home on. But see, the lots, they're more affordable to the consumer. So, and the consumer should be a big part of this conversation tonight because, uh, they're the ones that either can afford to build a home or can't. It was made mentioned, there's 250 homes been on the market here, I believe they said for 180 days. Well, it's, as long as I've been in business here, there's always been people that want to build new homes. It's, it's kind of an American dream. People wanna build their, a new home. And, um, if there's not lots available, they, they don't have that opportunity. The, the new homes in this community, um, have added a lot to this town. In the 60s, 70s, and early 80s, there were not very many nice homes in this town. And I believe that has really improved the appearance of, uh, Rock Springs to other communities in our state and other places out of state. I do agree with, uh, some of the things Jay and Fred said that it, the city kinda should try to help, um, in development costs. In around 83 or 84, the city developed some lots. I believe they, it was called Rendezvous. It's over off of Sweetwater. And they sold those lots at a drawing um, for $8,000 apiece to promote new homes. Because at that time, this community just did not have, um, many nice homes to build or in, in the town at all. So, I, I would hope that the city can start helping the developers a little bit because there's huge costs there. I, I've wanted to be a developer, I, I can't afford to be. I, I don't have the finances to do that. So, I would like to see the city try to help the development costs, which will, uh, relate to the home builder paying less for the lot. So.
You'll have to wrap it up, Mike.
So, um, the, the people that I would like to see you keep in mind, um, in this conversation that aren't here are the, the people that would get to build in this new subdivision. The 70 families, I think they are the most important voice here today. Does anyone have any questions?
Counselors, question. Mr. Hayden, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
My name is, uh, Justin Lemon. That I am one of the, uh, owners of Smart Dwellings, a local home builder. Has been building here for about the last seven years. That, uh, I'd like to emphasize again, uh, they, there was, it spoke of that there's no hardship on using larger lots, except that, um, the market isn't there. Um, over the last four years, um, 3.6% of homes on the MLS were over $450,000. It's a very small portion of the population that can afford to buy a home such as that. In the 350,000-plus, I have record of 13% of the homes were, were above 350,000. And in the 300 to 350, $350,000, um, was 13% of homes. But in that $50,000 range of the 300 to 350, which I believe I could actually put homes in there at that price, under the current things, it would sol, solve, solve, it would be available to a larger portion of the population than, um, everything from 350 and above that is go, and, um, that, uh, actually pulled, um, my typical report that I use is the Rock Springs area. My typical level, um, that we've been seeing over the last four years, of, of my report that I've been using is actually in the 260 home range, whereas right now I'm pulling 146 off of my typical report. I think we're actually at a low level of home volume. Over the last four years, it's taken typically, um, 120 days for a home to be on the market. Of homes that sold in the last, um, year, it was 107 days. We're actually seeing statistically a smaller portion of homes, uh, on the market and for a length of time. And, um, I don't have any lack of new home buyers, but I very commonly have a problem with not being able to have a, a lot that fits what they want. Almost every single, well, basically every lot that is in this subdivision is larger than what I've been working off of for the last several years. And I'm looking forward to having some bigger home, some bigger lots to work off of. I don't know if this has been discussed by the HOA, but it's, uh, within their powers and boundaries to split the HOA. And to, um, if, if they're concerned about the, um, voting membership and I, and I sympathize, I sympathize with them of their voting membership being dispersed, of amending the rules and separating themselves from the rest of the subdivision. And that's something that, um, I would be in favor of. And of anyone that's been jumped into a venture, and I've done this times before, but sometimes we're wrong, that we make assumptions and, uh, considering how long it took this first phase to sell, I think the, uh, the assumption was that there would be a high demand for this. And there has been a very low demand for these type of homes. And as much as, as a builder, I don't want additional regulation. I am in favor of, uh, taking additional steps of mitigation against, uh, affecting the neighboring home buyers. It would be within the city's ability and, and for discussions from the building department of requiring, um, covered trash cans for all construction sites and possible other mitigating steps. It would be within the bu, building department's ability to propose amendments if to cons, reduce mitigation on the neighboring properties. I'm very concerned for that. I try really hard not to affect the neighboring properties. And, um, tried to do nice homes and be a good neighbor during my construction. And I often get told when I'm building in a vacant lot, and I, I like the infillots or neighboring, um, existing homes, that they're so happy to see a house going in here. It cuts down on the wind, on the snow, on the weeds, on the dirt blowing in as neighbors finish. I appreciate your time. Are there any questions for me?
Justin, thank you for your comments, councilors.
Yes.
Three percent?
Yes, 3.6%.
Okay, question.
Mm-hmm.
What I understand, uh, that are proposed out at Phase two, 400.
I, I, I think that's a high estimate.
We're still got a small population that would.
The mid-range, it's, it's all, obviously theoretical numbers because we don't have the actual numbers. Um, but I can put on $100,000 lot, I can sell a home at 350.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate that. Any other questions, councilors? Okay, any others wanna speak in support of the development?
So I'm Tom Spicer. I'm commonly referred to as Satan. So, please, uh, notice that. So I'm not gonna have, I don't have many comments. I'll be, this'll be quick. I, uh, I'd like to point out that this is not a zone change, it's a PUD amendment. And all of the other conditions of the PUD still apply. So, the amendment only, uh, changes the lot size from three-quarters of an acre down to about a quarter of an acre for the smallest lots. The smallest lot in the, uh, in the proposed, uh, De Bernardi drawing is a 10,800 square feet and every other lot has more than, more than 11,000 square feet. So, so it's, th, these are not small lots. In fact, any house in Sweetwater Station, Phase one, would fit on the smallest lot that we're, we're proposing. These are big lots, big lots for, for, uh, Rock Springs. I mean, uh, to, to think of this as being kind of a reproduction of, uh, of, uh, skyline estates or whatever that is down there on the corner, this is just not true. These are, these are big lots and they get bigger as they go, as they go toward, uh, um, toward, uh, Phase one. So, uh, down, down there, they're, uh, they're all three-quarter acre lots and, which is about the size of, uh, of the Peabody's lot. So, I mean, I mean, they're huge lots. They, they are bigger than any place else in Rock Springs. So, just understand, this is not, not a, uh, we're not trying to put in a, a, um, uh, trailer park, okay? The, uh.
I'm gonna get a lot of hate mail in the morning.
Oh, maybe. I just hope somebody doesn't shoot me in the back. I, I'm glad this, this discussion, uh, didn't devolve into a lot of, uh, of particulars about, about, uh, traffic. So, that, this won't, will not affect Phase one traffic, one car. So, all of the traffic is, is, is sent out to Signal and sent down to Signal to Foothill or to, to Yellowstone. And, um, um, so it might affect the traffic on those major feeder streets, but it, there, I mean, it shouldn't affect, unless we have some, somebody who just wants to wander through and look at houses, it shouldn't affect the traffic in Phase one, one iota. So, period. Second thing is, uh, is the issue about, uh, um, uh, it's hard to keep track of all of this. About, uh, so, 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 uh, in, in this PUD amendment, everybody still has to adhere to all of the other conditions of the, of the, uh, of the PUD. And that is, there's a certain, uh, building size, house size that they have to adhere to. There's a certain architectural requirement that, that gets to be reviewed by, uh, the HOA. I'm not sure how the HOA would, would work out with this. I've, I've tried to encourage them to include these, these lots in their HOA because it would give them some control over them. But I understand their nervousness about, about all of a sudden these people having a chance to outvote them. So, I don't know how that would work out, but. So I don't know how that would work out, but, but we just have to work through that. Does, there were issues about, about property value. I think that's just a red herring. If we were proposing to put a sewer lagoon out there, it would harm somebody's property values. We're putting out there a very nice development, and, and it very likely will enhance property values, not cut them down. So, I mean, not only that, it increases people passing through, which is what your market is, and, and those issues. I do think that the, the loss of view is true. You know, I think that if you build some houses between you and the mountain, you can't see the mountain. But guess what? I didn't sell them the mountain. If they want the mountain, they can buy the land and not develop it. It's okay, you know? I really don't mind. And, and in the same token, I'm not the developer. I'm, I, with my brothers and sisters, own that piece of property. The De Bernardi family is going to be the developers. I didn't draw the plan up. I didn't choose those lot sizes. And, and I even like, kind of like, the passed out lot sizes. But I can tell you that as those lot sizes get bigger, it gets much more economically challenging to make it work. So if, if the HOA or, or sections of the people who live out there would like to buy their property and do that, I'm for it. I don't, I don't object a bit. And we told them this back in February, when the price would have been a lot, lot less. We've put a lot of time and effort into, in developing the property since that time. And so the, the price has gone up just because they need to cover all of those costs. But, but if, if they want to do it, I'll, I don't know that, how easily it could be done, but I would, I would work with them to do that. So, I mean, that's kind of my comments. I, I don't want to carry on here. If you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Dr. Spicer, appreciate your comments. And councilors, are there any councilmen's...
It brought up that within the covenants, that there's a minimum house size. No one there?
Yeah, so the, the rule is that if it's a single floor, it has to be 2,000 square feet. If it's a, if it's a two-story house, the footprint of the living quarters has to be 1,600 square feet. So excluding the garage, so, but if it's two stories, then it's two stories, 1,600. And I've had some times when people ask me, you know, if I, if I put a bedroom above a garage, does that count as a living area or not? And I can just tell you that I've tried to protect that from, protect this area from that all along. We've just tried to main, be as honest and straightforward and, and protect the area so that it grew up and was a very nice place to live, and I think we're doing that. So the other, other comment I would make is, I was astounded when there was so much opposition to this. I thought this was such a wonderful thing for my Phase One people. I mean, you put up some wind block, all of a sudden the snow and the dust doesn't become a problem. You know, we're gonna, the water system is going to improve so that they end up, right now they have about 35 PSI. It'll go to about 70 when we get it done. So, and, and that's where the, an agreement to work with, with White Mountain Water and Sewer. And, and so I know the fire department is very concerned about 35 PSI for fighting fires out there, but 70 is really good. So, I mean, but not only that, it's good for sprinkling flowers and making lawns and all that stuff. So, I mean, there are just lots of benefits to Phase One to doing this. I, I was just astounded that everybody was so against it. Done.
Thank you, Dr. Spicer. Any other questions?
Thank you. This is a little bit off the subject, but did anybody bring any food? Does anyone, chicken wings, fried rice?
I have a life saver in my pocket. Please address me as Satan, okay?
But I wanted, I wanted to ask you about that little slice of BLM that's right next to your property. You know, it's about 160 acres or something like that. It's got Anadarko on the one side, city on the other side.
So this is on the south side?
South.
Yeah. So, so at the time we bought this property, which was in the 1970s, the BLM told us that they would never sell that land because it was very important to antelope migration in the, in the fall and the spring. And, but I think their opinions have changed, and I think they eventually will make this be available. And in fact, Rock Springs is going to spread across that, all the way from us to Gunsite at some point. So, but, but right now it belongs to them, and until I choose to sell it, you can't do anything.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Halter?
I know I don't speak. Just bear with, I've got, it's clear to me, everybody in this room is the one that's against the development of property. So the issues I, are, we have ordinance that says RE, quarter acre lot, RE side. So looking at this plan, seven lots, 23 of them, about 20,000 square are less than. So my concern is, if it passes this, that true development, set of precedents, basically, we've had this issue before, Gunsite actually, it's Phase Two. However, those lot sizes were brought down to the size of seven. So RE, less than one coordinate possible, so concerned with. Looking at the post plan that they passed out earlier, all of these are point, are three-quarter acre lots. However, I would, I would be willing to, for the whole RE subdivision, Phase One, Phase Two, personally, I would be willing to go down half, half an acre second, but still maintaining three-quarter acre lot along that east side. So I don't know how many lots that would give us, but it would, I think, I know the other issue, we have all this R1 available to the city, but it's not available to purchase. So there's R1 developed on it. So this is, this is kind of get us going by whoever. So the problem is, is the lot that Anadarko has, or section, I should say, they won't subdue. So that's another problem, is that that can't be developed without some significant investment. So I get the struggles from both sides. I think we have the hardest job in the room right now. But I also believe that we could probably somehow, I don't know what your minimum lots that you could be, but personally, I'd like to be in the middle. I really don't want to go against our ordinance, but I would at least like to see majority of these lots be on larger.
But Councilman Halter, actually, we're not going against the ordinance. The process of the PUD is to resolve, you know, look at the design and make that decision on what, what would be acceptable through the PMZ and the city council. So the three-quarter lot acre size, I think, was the PUD Phase One, if I'm correct, and that's why they're going through this process, is to change.
Your honor, if I could, with that, your argument, when I look at, I'm kind of thinking that way too, but I look at the history, and if you want to call it a precedent, that's already been set when we approved this the first time, because the ordinance required RE to be a minimum of two acres. And so what we did with the PUD is 100% of those lots were less than two acres, with the minimum being quarters of an acre all at one point. So we're not setting any new precedents, so to speak, there, if, if we did this. I mean, at the time that this was approved, 100% of the lots were outside the ordinance for RE. It was only after, in 2005, six, or whatever, that council, when all this was approved and done, that council then re-looked at the ordinance and said, you know what, let's keep, let's take RE from a two-acre minimum requirement, and let's make it a .75. And so that's where the change came from, that .75. So when this was originally done, it was, minimum lots, that .75 were considerably lower than what the actual was ready.
So stand that. My, my problem is, is why haven't ordinance staying lot sizes if...
And that's what the PUD, when you look at the provisions of a PUD, it provides that flexibility. So that's where the, where it comes. Yeah, and that's where the balance is, you know, utilize that PUD.
Councilor Halter, I would only add that as you increase those lot sizes from what they are to half, half an acre, it becomes economically more challenging, and that's not up to me. I'm just selling the land. So that's up to the De Bernardis and, and the engineers, how they can fit those lots in and, and what they think they can sell them for. So, you know, it took us 15 years to sell these lots. I mean, 15 years. So, I mean, it, you have to have some staying power to have that kind of money wrapped up in a project and, and hang on for, for 15 years. But, so, I'm not sure that I would agree with having, having the lots, the, so there were some envisioned lots way back when, and they were drawn up. There was no engineering done. I mean, there was nothing more than a, than a plan. And, I mean, it's been referred to as a promise, but it was not a promise from me. So at any rate, I, I think you can make those lots be bigger, but it becomes much more of a, of an economic challenge to make it work.
Excuse me, what you saying, the downside, so... Did you say half acre? Yeah, I would be willing to go down to half acre through the PUD, but, I mean, what's the point of having a three-quarter acre limit if it's going to change? That's my point. I'd be willing to be in the middle. I'm, I'm trying to throw out a compromise here, I mean, so...
Dr. Spicer, I appreciate it. Counselors, any other comments? Thank you. Any others in support of the project?
My name is Mary Manataos. I'm with High Country Realty. I just want to just give just a couple of facts from, that I have through our multiple listing service. These are homes that are listed right now with a real estate agent. I'm, I'm just here to give information, that's it, just because the numbers were interesting. We have 129 homes on the market in Rock Springs available right now. I don't know if it counts, but there's 33 in Green River, and there are four residential lots available in the city of Rock Springs. We have eight residential lots available in the county. I just wanted to put that number out there, just because I wasn't sure where these other numbers came from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions for...
All right, I've got questions. Not necessarily for Mary, but it looked like people were done talking. I don't know if that, I don't know, but I wanted to get some questions in for, some of the, some of the concerns that were raised. One was the water pressure. Well, one of the issues with properties now is water pressure, and it's low, it's 35. Now, with the plan, design that's in front of us now for consideration, that would require water service from White Mountain Water District. It would bring the pressure up to about 70, 75. If this was not changed and developed the way it is, would there still be that effect on water with the new Phase Two being developed as it sits now? Would that require water from Water District? So with the development of Phase Two, would it still improve, as it sits now, would it still improve the water pressure from Phase One? I just want to note, just a general...
So, so Doc, I'm sorry, but, but I'll take a beating in the morning if you just come on up and you'll, you'll get to speak, plus some exercise, it'll all be good. Thanks, Doc.
I'm sorry for the disruption. So, so the change in, in the water involves using White Mountain Water and Sewer, having the city buy water from them and then sell it to the Phase Two. But it would allow, the reason it's a really good deal for everybody is, is it allows them to have, have a circuit. So, you know, when you're dealing with water, if you have a pipe break and you can't turn off part of the circuit, then nobody has water until you fix the pipe. And, and this would allow them to turn the water off at any given place and, and still have water supply to everybody except the, right where the, where the water break was. So the White Mountain Water and Sewer are just delighted to do this because it gives them a whole access thing for, for that corner of their, of their service district. And in the end, it still has, the water still has to be sold to the city and then sold to the Phase Two. And so it's kind of a complicated arrangement, but, and I haven't been party to these discussions, so I, I don't want to represent that I know exactly what, what happens. But, but I'm told that White Mountain Water and Sewer thinks this is a really good deal for them because it does allow this circuit. And in addition to that, it, it's a good deal for us because it'll, it'll take our water pressure even for Phase One up, up to where you can water your lawn again instead of just letting it dribble.
Okay, I guess, let me try and rephrase this. If this was developed as it sits now, as Phase Two sits, with 28, would it require us to bring in White Mountain District anyway?
I think so.
I just wondered if, but does that make any difference?
Well, either, either you have to bring them in, or you have to have a pumping station.
It's a convoluted issue, and I think better to be left with Mr. Cowsage because it involves the joint powers, Water Board, and their system and, and many millions of dollars of upgrades. Paul, just go, go ahead.
Yes, your honor. I think to answer your question, it doesn't matter how that land is developed, we cannot serve it the way our waters sit. It would require, doesn't matter how many lots, or anything else, our disagreement with White Mountain.
Okay, thank you. That's what I...
I think that's...
It is, yeah. Then the second question, I don't know if, we've heard the issues of home values being affected. And I, with any subdivision we've done, any change we've done, that's from Gunsite to Morning Side to whichever, we've always heard that it's going to affect the values. Now, is there any information that anybody have that actually shows that values are affected? Because in, with talking to appraisers in the past, they don't seem to think these changes really make a difference in value, but I don't know. I haven't seen, and I don't know that anybody's ever presented anything other than speculation that values would be affected.
I'm told that it doesn't, that if you put something really low-end in there, it would cause a problem. So if you put a sewer lagoon in there, or, you know, I don't know, a trailer park, it would not be good for, for the adjacent landowners. But if you do anything that's reasonable, it's not going to change land values adjacent, so...
Daniel, why don't you come, can you come down just a minute?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Como. Daniel Pedri back up here. So I spend a lot of time going around talking to all the residents within the subdivision, but also the people in county. And we have one very concerned county resident that is within 140 feet, and he, he was hesitant on signing the petition, but he did some research. And the Water Board, they were approached, but they tabled it, and they're not actually going to review this until the 13th of August. And so they're, they're waiting for a professional engineering plan before they'll even give it any consideration. So that, that's to also add to that. And, you know, Rob, well, I'm up here, you know, traffic was a major concern of those residents, because it's not just the congestion within Phase One and Phase Two, because everybody's using Summit as a thoroughfare coming down from the county. And as that rounds around into Signal, Dan Stanton with Industrial Supply on the corner, very, very concerned about that. Pioneer Coil tubing, they have a lot of truck traffic coming in, and they feel that that really increases their risk exposure. And one last note, you know, I did look at the subdivision to the east of us, and I don't know where those numbers came from, because Dan Shear, he was the one selling that development, and that took every bit of 15 years to put that division together. So the build-out is long regardless of what size of home or type of home you're building.
But with, with the sewer and water board though, I mean, no matter what, done there...
No. Well, they're, they're not... Well, they, they're not even considering it until a professional engineering plan is submitted.
Well, just to elaborate on that a little bit, um, this falls on the developer to, to pay for this. And I believe, um, the developer has decided, uh, they, they're willing to do that. Uh, White Mountain Water and Sewer feel that it's, it'll work well. They're just reluctant to spend that, those dollars unless.
Well, they know what's going on.
Yeah.
And the county residents would also have a chance to speak on that, correct?
Uh, I believe the residents of the water, of the water.
Correct.
The district.
Which one of the signatories on that petition, he's, he's not happy, and he's gonna do everything he can to derail that. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, did you want to chime in and then we'll move on if we could?
The plan for the water cannot be developed until you know the demand. We have to have a set number of lots, property to have a demand, to even put together a plan to know what we're looking to get for water for this subdivision. So that's, that's the issue with, you gotta have the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart. Which way are we moving here? We, we get approval for this and it doesn't work because of this. The, this is, the process says, we've gone to the Water Board. There's benefits to them. Uh, as it sits, they, with future development, these ties to their system, when the mid-range tank gets built in, who knows, twenty years, five? It's hard to say depending upon the development. Anadarko sells that piece. That tank could be pushed and move forward a lot faster at that point. That, these taps from White Mountain essentially, you take the meter, flip it, and the city's selling them water. That, that's the plan that White Mountain Sewer and Water District are well aware of. That, that's, that's the intention of, of the plan to serve this is, future-wise, that will be their redundant feed to their system that they need.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. If I could, I did see in the back, recognize Representative Stith and Senator James in the back. Thanks for coming. Anything you can do at the state level to, uh, send more money to Rock Springs to fix their infrastructure would be helpful. And, uh, I would ask, is there anyone else speaking in support of this project? Anyway, hearing that, I'm gonna close the petitions or the public hearing section of this agenda. And, um, before we get too far out of line, uh, Devin, I know you're about ready to go to sleep up there, but, uh, we bypassed you. You were at a Green River meeting. Um, Presentation on Air Service Cooperative Agreement Amendment, uh, Mr. Devin Brubaker, Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport Director.
I just wish I could sell some land up at the airport and build some houses. We could use the money.
Yeah, we could use some water.
I don't think the F A would be too happy. Um, so, uh, I'm here tonight just to explain a, a new agenda item, mayor and counselors. It's on, uh, later in your agenda. It is an amendment number one to the cooperative agreement with Sweetwater County and the city of Green River for the air service enhancement program, minimum revenue guarantee. This is a time-only extension. There is no additional money requested with this. What happened was we performed very well once again during fiscal year nineteen. And also due to the fact that, uh, the new capacity purchase agreement wasn't gonna take effect till October first. We needed to bridge the gap from June thir, or basically July first to the end of September for air service. Sky West agreed to extend their minimum revenue guarantee in time only by three months with no additional funding necessary. Um, so they, they agreed to that. The county signed that agreement. And, uh, today they approved the grant agreement from, uh, YDOTs. It's the time-only extension on the grant agreement. And now this is the last document, uh, both the county and the ci, uh, city of Green River have approved it already. Um, you guys are the last party to, uh, probably get to it at this point because I think Green River went home about an hour ago from their council meeting. So, um, they, uh, the, it's, it's like I said, it's as simple as a time-only extension. I will be most likely back in two weeks. Yeah, I think that's the eight straight city council meeting I've presented to you at, um, and I apologize for that. But we'll be back hopefully in two weeks to present the new M O U. Um, and the new, uh, cooperative agreement that starts the new delivery of air service on October first. Um, so I, I don't know if there's any other questions you guys have on it, but I just want to make sure you knew that it was time only and there was no extra money attached to it. So happy to answer any questions you have.
Your Honor.
Councilman Zada.
I want to thank you for not asking for any. Thank you.
Any other question? Devin, we appreciate, uh, your input and for shedding some light on that, and, uh, we'll deal with it here later.
Okay, thank you.
This is gonna move us on to the petitions section of our agenda. The petition section is for anyone wishing to address the council on any issue other than the issue that we just went through. You will have five minutes. Well, any issue? Is there anyone? Seeing none, I'm going to close the petition section of our agenda and move on to the officers, staff reports, counselors. We have the financial report summary for June two thousand nineteen. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve the financial report placed on file.
Counsel, we have a motion to approve the financial report summary, June two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. And this is going to take us to council committee and board reports. Counselors, we have the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting minutes of June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Is there any other, um, council committee reports needed at this time?
Your Honor, I've got one.
Councilman West.
Just a quick update for you all. It's a small little project that we've been working on in, in Ward Four. It wasn't my idea, but, so I'm not gonna steal credit for it. But I just kinda wanted to thank Paul for his assistance too, and it's a vision mainly of, uh, Mark Lyon. But the gateway coming into Rock Springs on exit one oh seven, where you see all those trees, the water was on the opposite side of, of the, uh, the off-ramp area there. And so we've been hand-watering those for many years, which takes anywhere from eight to twelve hours a week to get that done. And so, uh, we got together with Paul and the Engineering and Water Departments, as well as, uh, the Parks Department. We were able to bore underneath that so that we can have future water on that side of it and be able to, uh, grow any, um, beautification enhancements in the future. So I just wanted to thank all those involved and, uh, let you know what's going on there.
Appreciate that, Counselor West, and that will, uh, definitely be a, a plus for, um, for the Parks Department and those trees.
Your Honor.
Uh, Councilman Zada.
If I could, just to go on that topic, I was driving onto the on-ramp the other day. I don't, not take that route often, but I noticed the trees and it, it does make impact. And I, I just hadn't been there for a while and it really kinda.
Yeah.
It, it is a nice visual impact for the, so it is really, whoever had the vision to do that, we're trying to thank you. That was great.
Yeah.
Great project.
Counsel, I'd entertain a motion to approve the council committee and reports in place on file.
So move.
We do have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, it's gonna take us to the correspondence, counselors. Several items on, uh, correspondence. If you had time to, uh, take a look, review, I would entertain a motion to approve the correspondence and place the correspondence on file.
So move, Your Honor.
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's gonna bring us to the bills and claims. Item number one, the bills and claims for August sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendell.
I move to approve the bills and claims for August sixth, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the bills and claims for August sixth, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Upstaying.
Let the record show. Item number two, the salaries for July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendell.
I move to approve the salaries for July twenty-second, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's gonna bring us to the new business items on our agenda. Item number one, the approval of the city of Rock Springs revised grant policy. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve that revised grant policy.
We do have a motion to approve the revised grant policy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the approval of the city of Rock Springs revised investment policy. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve the revised investment policy.
We have a motion to approve the investment policy, revised investment policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number three, the request from the Department of Engineering and Operations Public Services for permission to fill a vacant planning tech position. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve that request.
We have a motion to approve the request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let the record show. Two opposed. Uh, item number four, the request from the Rock Springs Main Street U R A for a road closure for the Tiger Town Bash to include North Front Street from Fifth Street to K Street on September fifth, two thousand nineteen, from three thirty P M. until the event concludes. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendell.
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion, Your Honor, this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number five, the request from the Holy Trinity Greek, Greek Orthodox Church of Rock Springs for a road closure for tree removal to include Ann Street from Pilot Butte Avenue to the Civic Center on August fourteenth through the fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, from seven A M., seven P M. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Halter.
To approve.
Have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number six, the request from the Eagles Club for a road closure for a membership event to include B Street from Second Street to Broadway on August twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, six P M. to one A M. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve that request.
We have a motion to approve that request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number seven, it's a request from Cherrywood LLC, doing business as the Holiday Inn for a liquor catering permit for Artini on August twenty-three, twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, from five P M. to eleven P M. in downtown Rock Springs. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve this request.
We have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number eight, the request from Santa Fe Trail Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Chesapeake reception on August seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, from four P M. to midnight at the Bunning Hall. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And item number nine, the request from Square State Brewing for a malt beverage permit for the Mivshik Trameling Wedding on August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, from five P M. to midnight at the Bunning Hall. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Wendell.
I move to approve that request.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Upstate.
Let the record show. It's gonna bring us to the resolution section of our agenda. And item number one is the resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-one-two.
A resolution accepting and approving a revocable license agreement with Rocky Mountain Power and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said revocable license agreement on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Hey, counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
You might recall, they, uh, this is the committee we just recently created through the Rock Springs Box Art Committee, and I think they presented to us back in February. Suzie, Suzie out in the audience. So this is taking some time, um, but it's for decorating the electrical boxes throughout town and putting, putting together a committee to, uh, approve artwork and things of that nature. I think it took about three-quarter of the department heads here to get this done. So I appreciate everyone's dedication and hard work on, uh, what, what seemed to be a simple item. And with that, I'd move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one-one-two.
Counselors, we do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen one-one-two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendell.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Halter.
I don't look anything like that.
My bad.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Um, item number two, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-thirteen.
A resolution accepting and approving amendment to the fiscal year twenty nineteen air service enhancement program cooperative agreement among Sweetwater County, Wyoming, the city of Green River, Wyoming, and the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and authorizing and directing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute the amendment one on behalf of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one-one-three.
We have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-one-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendell.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number three, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-one-four.
A resolution accepting and approving a revised memorandum of understanding between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and the Sweetwater Events Complex and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said revised memorandum of understanding on behalf of said city.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Halter. We have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen one-one-four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendell.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Upstate.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number four, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-one-five.
A resolution accepting and approving an engagement agreement with BiCoastal Productions and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said engagement agreement on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve twenty nineteen one-one-five.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen one-one-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call on the resolution.
Counselor Tate.
Yes.
Wendell.
Yes.
Halter. West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi. Demus.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number five, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-one-six.
A resolution accepting and approving a contract with Young Dubliners, Inc. and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said contract on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendell.
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one-one-six.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen one-one-six. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Wendell.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number six, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-one-seven.
A resolution accepting and approving a communication site lease agreement with L R Communications, Inc. and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs to execute said lease on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one-one-seven.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen one-one-seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Second called. Roll call.
Counselor Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Upstate.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Wendell.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number seven, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one-one-eight. Item number seven, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash one one eight.
A resolution accepting and approving a concession stand rental agreement with the Young American Football League of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said rental agreement on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash one eighteen.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash one eighteen, is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called, roll call.
Counselor West.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Zadi.
Abstain.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windor.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. This brings us to item number eight, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash one one nine.
A resolution approving and accepting major changes to the development plan for Sweetwater Station Edition Phase Two, a planned unit development within the corporate limits of the City of Rock Springs, Sweetwater County, Wyoming, submitted by Four D Development LLC, covering a thirty-six point seven-two-five acre tract situated in the northwest quarter of Section sixteen, Township nineteen north, range one oh five west of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Sweetwater County, Wyoming.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Zadi.
In light of all the information that's come about, been going back and forth, both for and against this the last four days, and the letters, both for and against, people who are here to comment on this and what has been said, I would like to make a motion to table this resolution to give counsel a little more time to digest what's out there, and really fully understand what we're doing, what the history was, and make an informed decision to.
Counselors, we have before you a motion to table Resolution two thousand nineteen dash one one nine, we have a second to table.
Second, with the comment, um, I'd, I'd like to table it as well, and I'd like to